...meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission. And again, if you turned them on while we were doing all that long agenda, please turn on your cell phones. Any final actions tonight, tape and I on the conditional use permit applications will take effect five working days following the meeting unless a written appeal to the Planning Commission is filed in the Planning Office by Monday, February 3rd at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, February 18th at 9:15 a.m., and the meetings are held in the same room. Any final action taken on a rezoning application tonight will be referred to the County Commission for a public hearing on Tuesday, February 25th at 9:00 a.m., also in the same room. At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the November 25th meeting are included in the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission to any items listed on the consent agenda? I move the consent agenda. So move second. All right, this time, where did I skip that? I guess I should be reading all the items on the consent agenda in case there's any objections.
I think there are going to be, so.
Okay. As mentioned, the first item is the minutes for November 25th, 2013. That's actually item two. Did you want us to be electing officers now?
Why don't we go through the items that are being polled, and then we'll do the election of officers.
Got it. So that will be moved to the end. Then the approval of minutes of November 25th. A conditional use permit is item number three to construct a storage units on property located at 266-46 Douglas Avenue. That's approximately a quarter mile north of Rowena.
I'll just have to hold.
So that will get moved to the regular agenda. Item number four is a rezoning 14-01 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to I Light Industrial District, and that is on the west side of Lyons. Okay? Item number five is a conditional use permit, 14-02, to amend the CUP 12-11 to exceed 1,200 square feet of an accessory building, and they're requesting 4,374 square feet. This is located at 2,200 North Indian Hills Trail, approximately one mile east of Sioux Falls. There's one here, objection.
It's salted, no, I'm but.
You're just, yeah, okay. Anyone concerned about that being on the consent agenda? Okay. Then item number six is conditional use permit, 14-03, to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building, and they're requesting 16,443 square feet. And this is at 48609 254th Street, and that's approximately one mile southeast of Guretson. Okay. Item number seven is a rezoning 14-02 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to I Light Industrial District, and that is approximately one quarter mile south of Crooks Runner exit, directly adjacent to the I-29 North Pond. Item number eight is a conditional use permit, 14-05, to allow sanitation business on the property legally described. There's a bunch of stuff, but it's really located at 46314-265th Street, and that's approximately five miles south of Hartford. Do we do the regular agenda? Okay. So let's do that again. The consent agenda then would consist of items four, six, and seven. So Commissioners, do you want to move that?
Five as well.
Five. Oh, five was okay.
Yeah.
So it's four, five, sixty, seven.
And two.
And two.
I'll move it.
Thank you. All those in favor of that sloppy approach? Say aye.
Aye.
Both same side? And then consent agenda is approved. So if you were here for items two, four, five, six, and seven, you're free to go. Also, often to stay enlisted. So item number four. Oh, excuse me, item number three, which is a conditional use permit, 14-01.
Good evening, Commissioners. Conditional use permit 14-01 is to construct storage units on a property legally described as tract two, Rose Edition, in the northeast corner of Section 26. It's also located just north of Rowena, pretty much right in Rowena. The property was zoned C commercial by the Minnehaha County Commissioners on May 21st, 2013. The neighboring property directly to the south of the site on Douglas Avenue consists of two residential properties. However, the recently passed Red Rock Corridor Plan designates the two residential lots as commercial on the future land use plan. Article 11.10.3d of the Red Rock Corridor Overlay District Development Standards, which is RRCO, as indicated throughout the staff report. The development standards indicates that 30-foot buffer and or other form of visual screening to be provided between any non-residential or residential uses, which... The submitted site plan, we skip forward here, indicates that the facility size would be approximately 3.74 acres, which is the outline of the property, which is outlined there. Storage unit facility will contain four 50-by-180 buildings. Separately, these buildings will consist of 84 units. The petitioner is requesting 30 12-by-20 units, 30 12-by-30-foot units, and 24 15-by-50-foot units. According to the Red Rock Corridor Overlay District Development Standards, the petitioner is required to provide a visual screen for the outdoor storage area on the north side and a 30-foot buffer with 32 trees spaced evenly apart or any other form of visual screening on the south side of the proposed storage unit facility. Since access is already provided to... Since access to the storage units will be provided via the petitioner's gravel driveway at the terminus of Douglas Avenue, the driving and parking areas are not required to be hard surface as stated in Article 15.04 of the 1990 revised zoning ordinance of Minnehaha County. The petitioner will be utilizing a gravel base for all driving, parking, and outdoor storage areas. The outdoor storage areas are indicated to the north of the first building, as you see on the site plan. If we skip forward here to the elevation... The elevations in your packet will show that the 15-by-50-foot storage units will have 12-foot by 10-foot overhead doors. The elevation for buildings three and four, which is the second elevation, shows that the 12-foot by 30-foot and 12-foot by 20-foot storage units will have 9-foot by 8-foot overhead doors. All buildings will be of typical pole building construction with 10-foot sidewalls for buildings three and four, and 14-foot sidewalls for buildings one and two. On the site plan, it shows an existing shelter belt. If we skip forward here to the next... This shows the entryway to the many storage units, and then if we skip forward, you look back towards the back, you'll see an existing shelter belt of deciduous trees. And this will just show more in depth of that buffer between the agricultural land and the petitioner's commercial, his proposed storage units. As I said, that wraps around the northwest corner of the property, and that says a visual screen for the outdoor storage area. And with the... On the southern border, the petitioner will be planting 32 pine trees as a visual buffer between the residential and non-residential use. Currently, the petitioner is not considering any on-premise or off-premise signage when I spoke with petitioner for the storage unit facility. Just a brief explanation of the unincorporated community of Rowena. It's a mix of residential, commercial, and industrial uses, and it was originally developed on the railroad to provide basic convenience to the agricultural community. Rowena is designated as a rural service area, which if you don't know what a rural service area is, it's basically is to encourage commercial and industrial uses to locate in those areas. The properties north of South Dakota Highway 42 are zoned for commercial, industrial, agricultural, and residential uses. Properties northwest and northeast of the petitioner's property are currently being used for agricultural purposes. Properties to the south include a variable mix of land currently zoned for residential, commercial, and industrial with a couple residential properties directly to the south, hence the visual screening between the non-residential and residential uses. As far as proposed use, storage units should have a minimal impact on the use and enjoyment of other property, specifically the two residential properties to the immediate south, but it may only be a slight visual impact as the property is changing from an agricultural to a commercial use. Given that a storage unit facility is more so considered a soft commercial use, there will be less of the impact than some of your more intensive agricultural uses. So the land use change will not significantly affect property values in the area. The two residential properties to the south of the petitioner's proposed location for the storage units are projected to be commercial on the future land use map for the Red Rock Corridor Overlay District. Thus, the proposed use for the petitioner's property will be consistent with the future growth and development of the Red Rock Corridor as stated in the plan. Since the petitioner's request is to construct storage units on the property, which is... I sent a couple letters out to the neighboring property owners. You will not be requesting onsite wastewater treatment, or a facility for the collection, disposal of garbage, and screening structures will not be needed to be provided. Those written notices were sent out on January 8th to all adjoining property owners indicating that the submitted site plan will contain a waiver of these two requirements due to the nature of the proposed use. Thus, we will need to do a site plan review. The site plan indicates that there will be adequate space provided for each individual storage unit to have a parking space while allowing enough clearance to drive in and out of the storage unit facility. And all lighting should be directed down around the property in order to prevent light spillage to the neighboring properties, the residential and the agricultural. Thus, staff finds that the request to construct storage units is an appropriate use in a C commercial district and will not create a nuisance for surrounding property owners. So staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 14-01 with the following conditions: That the conditional use permit 14-01 shall permit the construction of a storage unit facility; that the property shall adhere to the submitted site plan received on 11/14/2013; that all outdoor storage areas be screened with a 90% opacity fence or with live trees; that a 30-foot buffer consisting of eight trees per 100 linear feet be spaced evenly, spaced 15 feet from the southern property boundary to provide a visual separation between the proposed use and the residential properties to the south; and that all trees be kept in a living state at all times; that no commercial business be conducted on the premises at any time; that the existing drainage pattern shall be maintained as shown on the site plan received on 11/14/2013; that a building permit is required prior to construction of the storage unit facility and will not be changed of any signage; that all signage shall meet the requirements of Article 11.10.3c of the Red Rock Corridor Overlay District as well as being conformant with Article 16 and 17 of the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. And with that, do you have any questions?
That is the applicant here to speak to this matter. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Paul Rowe, 266-46 Douglas Avenue, Rowena, Brandon, X.20, Rowena.
Did you have any comments or questions about staff? No? Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Does Douglas Street exist at this point?
Douglas stands at my driveway.
Okay, and it's traversable? Who keeps it clean?
County.
No, actually, it's the township.
I knew there was something against it.
If deeply, I plowed up to the highway so I can get out of it.
Thanks. Okay. Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience who wants to speak to this matter? Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Ellen Schroeder. I live just to the south of this property, next door to where they want to build it. I'm very much opposed to this. We have one road that comes down that ends at his driveway. The road is not proper. It starts at a two-lane, ends at less than a one-lane. The road used to continue on around a curve that went back towards the highway. I can't think of the name of the highway right now. 42? Nope. It goes to Belly Springs, and they had that blocked off. They have appropriate... They have an appropriate amount of land that they don't need storage sheds in this area. We already put up with a lot of running up and down this road. The road has not been maintained very well. Right now, if you wanted to go out, you could try to go down the road. You'd probably get a third of the way down it and slide the rest of the way into their driveway. It's nothing but ice. So it's not maintained well, and we have no other access out of there. They have a business on the property now, which there's a lot of big trucks that go up and down the road, so the road is... It's not maintained.
Mr. Kevin?
There's a lot of... There's a lot of gravel.
So where do you live?
I live just right...
There?
I live to the south.
Oh, to the south.
Right next door to where they want to put these buildings. There used to be a road that went in between our properties, an original road, when it was set up as a town, and it has been, it's not there anymore, but... There's a lot of traffic that goes up and down that road now. There's no access out except back up to Highway 42. I think having a building area there is going to make life for the residents a lot worse. We've put up with a lot now as it is and haven't complained because they're neighbors, and I don't like complaining now as well, but it's wrong.
Okay. Scott, do you have the picture that would be this one as well in your deck, slide deck that shows kind of the streets?
Nope, this is all I have.
Mr. Pastor? So what is on the south side of your property, then? Is that the guy who did the landscaping, rock and stuff?
There's another resident to the south of me, and then there's the landscaping.
That's where you... Okay.
Yeah. And my home is a homestead, so I don't see it being proposed as being commercial down the road.
Thank you.
Ms. Schroeder, can I ask you a question? How do you access your property?
From the same road.
From Douglas?
Yes.
And so how far back do you sort of turn off? If it terminates in his driveway...
When I back out of my driveway, I almost end up in my neighbor's yard.
In his yard?
Not in his yard, in the neighbor across the road to the east of me.
Can I ask you another question?
And there's only two culverts on that road, mine and theirs.
Another question? Is there any dust control on that road, Colonel?
No.
Okay.
There was dust control this past summer.
Once, but before that, there wasn't any, and they don't maintain that road at all.
Anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak to this matter? Mr. Rowe, do you have any additional comments?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Bonnie, what do you know about the maintenance on this piece of gravel?
You know, it's a rotation process, just like all the other section line roads out in the township. We do Douglas from the south side to the north side, and she's on the north side. I'm not saying that it isn't icy out there. It's icy all over on our gravel roads. It's kind of... You know, you're not in a township... I mean, we're in rural areas here, folks. It isn't like your neighbor's sitting right next door. So unless somebody calls our shop and tells us what's going on out there, we don't know... I mean, our guys go out and periodically look, but we don't always know that there's a lot of ice there. I do know that they did do dust control up there last summer. Usually, and it's usually because of the annual meeting, that the patrons tell us that they want the dust control. The last two years, they have said to dust control everything in the township. So that means at least for the last two years, you've gotten...
I understand that. I'm not a complainer.
No.
I'm just trying to get along with my neighbors.
Is it an average-sized road over there? No. Is it 66 feet wide, like everything else should be? No, it's not. Rowena is one of those kind of little towns that was there from God knows when, so to speak, and we do the best we can out there with what we've got. We did put some culverts in there a few years back. I do know that.
Well, not down on our end.
Well, there was one.
Well, except it was over by where the rock area was.
Yeah, right.
And another thing, too, is that with being a homestead, my home is a homestead. I think I have rights being a homeowner. I don't think I should have to put up with this. I don't come in and complain about my neighbors, you know? And I think they have adequate amount of land that they could put in an area where it would come in off the highway and not off a one single-lane road that ends at their driveway.
Wayne?
Yes?
You know, it's impossible to see this, but on the small picture here, it looks like that road does go up and take a right turn and go to the east.
It used to, but it was blocked off.
They closed it because there was holes in the culvert that was down.
The township didn't take care of it.
It's teeny tiny. You can't possibly see it, but it shows that on this small inset map. So basically, at the point where it elbowed, it ends, right? Good.
So in essence, are we jumping to residential properties for a commercial property? So what's happening?
They have a home on property.
No, but I mean between where this is being proposed.
Yeah.
You have a house, someone else has a house, and then it's commercial next to the highway where the rock yard is. So we're actually jumping to a different part of the unincorporated village to do this.
But it is zoned commercial.
It is already. Is that part of another?
It was already zoned, so...
Scott, can this picture be blown up more?
No, not from this.
Okay.
Scott might help the Commissioners and for the Ms. Schroeder to understand that with the existing zoning, there are quite a few things that could happen on that property without conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Permitted uses. Would you mind elaborating on what those might be for the benefit of the audience?
Sure. Well, the zoning ordinance breaks down. You have permissive uses, you have... Which are permitted. You have special permitted uses, and you have conditional uses. The... Uses that would just be permitted uses would be office spaces, banks, daycares, mortuaries, nursery or greenhouse, church, antennas, like a cell tower antennas, and group daycares, group homes. And then, under special permitted uses, those are uses that if they meet the criteria that's set forth in the zoning ordinance, it's permitted. Those would be like retail sales, personal services, communication facilities, warehousing, where there's no outdoor storage, where the building contains less than 10,000 square feet, and there's no storage of regulated substances. Veterinary clinics, provided there's no outdoor storage of dogs or animals. Frozen lockers, provided there's no slaughtering of animals. Off-premise signs, you could put a billboard up there. Telecommunication and broadcast towers. And then you have a whole list. There's like 25 conditional uses, and I won't go through all those, but we would go through the same process.
Thank you. Yeah, it gives us an idea of the types of things and the type of businesses and traffic that might be generated without our ability to put on special stipulations, right?
Yeah.
What's your pleasure, Commissioners? The question I would have is regarding, you got two houses there. This is just like Bonnie says, you live on a township road, basically. There's no stipulation for like dust control. Mandatory, I'm aware of, because traffic's going to be your number one issue because of services places. So can we put that stipulation?
Sure, you could put that they have to do dust control, that the traffic...
For whose request would be the...
That the applicant would be required to maintain the road so no dust occurs from usage of the facility.
So we can do that even on a public right-of-way, require them to maintain that portion of it or just within its property?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
It's similar to like the gravel pit Reynolds-Gustafson. We actually require them to pave it to do dust control, but...
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, could you come forward?
Sure.
Please. So we pick it up with the microphone.
If you allow them to do this, can you force them to open that road back up?
No.
Not the applicant, not me.
Then how can we be... Why are we going to be sacrificing our living conditions, allowing multiple vehicles to go up and down that road at the end of our road?
Regarding reopening of that road, I think you need to take that up with the township.
Then I don't understand why they didn't do that in the first place.
And I can't explain that for you. I'm sorry.
Wayne, I have another question for her, while she's...
Yes, please.
So how far from that property is your home?
The property line, you can see the fence in the picture.
Yeah.
It was...
Well, okay, but your home is not on the line, is it?
My home's not very far away. I would be looking out my kitchen window at their storage sheds.
Okay. And so what would you say? It would be 50 feet away, 100 feet away?
I don't know distance very well. It's not that far. I just don't think it's fair to put three other homes in jeopardy over somebody, in my opinion, being greedy. I don't think it's fair at all. That's not the way they're breeding into our community.
Any other questions, Ms. Schroeder?
Well, no, I'm more of a player for Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
On the township road, like Bonnie says, they aren't 66 feet. I mean, is that up to the township? We can't... I know we don't have the authority to force the township to run the road up to standards or anything, do we?
No, no, we can't do that.
Yeah, thanks.
Maybe I should reiterate. Webster was vacated with the approval of all the neighbors.
No.
Yes, it was.
No.
Because it wouldn't have been vacated otherwise.
I never proved it.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe it was a percentage. Our attorney said that it was vacated with the consent of all the neighbors.
I didn't even know about it until it was done.
My understanding was that everybody was notified.
No.
That was a safety issue there.
No.
That's why it was vacated. You know, we had closed it. People were using it, and then we were having to pull people out of it, and we were afraid that somebody was going to get killed in there. That's really what's going on.
Well, I can understand why it's closed out, but if there's going to be a big business, like storage buildings, going on a property like that, you would think that they would want that road open. You would think they would want their storage buildings to be close to a highway, and their property is on the edge of a highway on the east side of their property. So I don't understand why they want it right next door to their house and by my house.
I should maybe just explain to the audience that we have the benefit of buying... You're actually on the township board?
Right.
Yeah, and so she's got more in-depth information than the rest of us, and so as she says, "we," she's not referring to this group up here.
I understand.
She's referring to the township board. Mr. Rowe, did you have any?
My property does border the highway on the east end, but it's a flooded creek bottom. Whenever you get heavy rain or snow melt, that's all flooded, and I think the reason why Ms. Schroeder was not notified of Webster being closed because her land property does not border Webster on either side.
Yes, it does. It borders on the corner.
All right. Well, this is one of those difficult ones, Wayne, that we usually have. However, we're here to determine, is this appropriate use or something that's already zoned commercial? And it is. However, the stipulation has to be, I think, from a... I would add condition 10 where the petitioner would be required to provide dust control on whatever name that street is. Douglas? Douglas. Douglas, yes. So that's a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve the stipulations and the addition of a dust control on Douglas? A couple of questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. The motion carries. Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Just want to say, maybe Split Rock could look at approving that widening gap.
David, you're up again.
Commissioners, David Heino, my name is Owen. This one's for sanitation, basically for a sanitation business at the Wollie Corner intersection. It's just east, two properties east of that. The building will be used as an office space, which there's a small portion of it, which is the southwest corner of the building, will be used as the office space. And then there will be, the rest of the portion will be used to maintain sanitation trucks, as well as dumpsters and roll-off containers. There will be outdoor storage parking, if I go forward here to the site plan. You see, to the left, to the east of the main building is the outdoor equipment parking, which will have roll-off containers and dumpsters, and any other miscellaneous equipment will be stored behind the fenced area, which, if I skip forward again, right here, you'll see that the fence, it's already been provided, the screening fence is about ten-foot high. The nature of the business is mostly conducted over the phone, around the computer with very little drive-up traffic at the site. The hours of operation will generally be from six a.m. to six p.m. Monday and Friday. Staff did receive a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar penalty fee from RNS Sanitation on December thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, for conducting the sanitation business without proper approval. Staff met with the petitioner on January second, two thousand and fourteen, to discuss the request to allow sanitation business on the property located at four, six, three, and four, two sixty-fifth Street, which is right close to the Wollie Corner intersection. The discussion included responses to ensure that the proposed use meets necessary utility, access, drainage, off-street parking, and loading requirements, as well as other measures to lessen the impact of the business on neighboring properties. The petitioner has provided a site plan that shows the concrete parking and loading areas, which were already provided as the existing business, as two existing businesses before this. The plan also includes the location of the existing barrier fence near the main entrance off of South Dakota Highway forty-two, which will visually screen the outdoor storage area from public view or right-of-way, which is South Dakota Highway forty-two. The outdoor storage, equipment parking area will be screened by twenty deciduous trees on the east side, and a five-foot berm along the eastern boundary, which was set aside in previous conditional use permits for one of the businesses that stated that the berm was good enough, but then maybe something to discuss as far as providing a screen fence and additional things like that. The business will be utilizing an onsite wastewater disposal system that will be located north of the main building. Septic tank is just north, as you can see there. Signage will be located at the south front of the main building. As far as the use and enjoyment of property in the immediate vicinity, with the majority of the business being conducted over the phone, as the petitioner stated, there should be a minimal effect on the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties. And with a low amount of drive-up traffic from the nature of the business, it should not have a detrimental impact on either South Dakota Highway forty-two or existing land Since the location of the business near Wollie Corner is consistent with the nineteen county comprehensive development plan, the future development plan says that there should be a reasonable expectation that the proposed use is appropriate, will not impede future growth in a defined rural service area, which is an area where commercial and industrial uses are encouraged to locate. Since most of the utilities are already provided, no utilities or access points will be needed to be provided. The existing drainage pattern on the property will be maintained, which drains to the ditch on the east property boundary, which there's the berm that's to the east where you'll see where the property line is, and to the north grass area along, just east of the equipment parking. According to the site plan, the petitioner has accounted for the one space per three-hundred square feet of office space, and the one twelve-foot-by-twenty-foot loading space for approximately ten thousand square feet of gross floor area in the main building. Upon inspection of the property during the meeting on January second, two thousand and fourteen, the business currently meets all zoning ordinance requirements, so it would otherwise constitute a nuisance. Currently, all lighting is of a full cutoff and fully shielded design to prevent light spillage beyond property boundaries. Just goes through some of these pictures that I took. This is that main entrance to the business off of South Dakota Highway forty-two, and this shows just the rest of the business with the screening fence, as well as the trees to the east of the sanitation, the proposed use. And then this is looking back east towards the business. And that shows the outdoor storage and roll-off containers, as well as the dumpsters that will be located within that outdoor equipment parking area. And this will show a view from on top of the berm that's located on the eastern property boundary. And here are a couple photos that were submitted to me by the neighboring property owner, the legal representative. I've been speaking with him about some possible nuisances as far as the property with this, the dilemma between providing that screening fence and with where the trees are actually located, which according to that, according to the neighboring property owners, the trees are located on, they are property which would otherwise necessitate that the petitioner would have to provide a screen fence, ninety percent opacity, which since that berm sits up on the high, they would have to be, maintain the height of the fence from the neighboring property owner, which is to the east, which would probably be around an eight-foot fence with the screening. But just as far as... There were, there were a couple other things that were mentioned, as far as the odor and the sludge remaining from the story, from the dumpsters and the roll-off containers, as far as, I've spoken to the petitioner about being able to control those, he said that all the garbage containers will be tarped upon arrival at the property. As far as the screen, there was an issue with South Dakota Highway forty-two and the garbage trucks leaving the property, and people were trying to overtake them, so this would be more of an issue for South Dakota Department of Transportation. I don't know if Travis Dressen is here, but he said he might try to come, but as far as people trying to pass the sanitation trucks, it's more of a driver behavior problem than controlling that. It was mentioned that we could maybe include a quarter-mile no-passing zone from that Wollie Corner intersection. But since the Department of Transportation, they generally do no-passing zones for vertical site distances and things like that. And since this is more of a driver behavior problem, it's more, it's one of those things that you have to continue to monitor in terms of what's going on out there. So it's just something to note. However, staff finds that the request to allow sanitation business is inappropriate use in the C Commercial District and will not create nuisance for surrounding property owners. So staff recommends approval of conditional use permit fourteen dash zero five of following conditions. That CP fourteen dash zero five shall allow the operation of sanitation business. That the property shall adhere to the submitted site plan received on twelve twenty-seven eight, two thousand and thirteen. That all outdoor, I'm changing this one, that all outdoor storage areas be screened with a ninety percent opacity fence. That the existing drainage pattern shall be maintained as shown on the site plan received on twelve twenty-seven, two thousand and thirteen. That a building permit is required prior to installation of any signage. That no materials, parts, tires, et cetera, shall be allowed outside of the fenced area. That all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded design to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property boundary. That the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the sanitation business at any time after proper notice to the owner, to ensure that the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval and the Minnehaha County zoning ordinance. And a couple other ones, which I've sent an email out to Commissioners, and also the legal represent, legal representative, as well as the petitioner. A couple of conditions to maybe include, that the maintenance of all sanitation trucks, equipment, and garbage containers be performed inside the main building. That all sanitation trucks, equipment, and garbage containers shall be cleaned out prior to arrival at the site, to ensure that no public nuisances, nuisances will be caused by the sanitation business. There's also, the petitioner noted that there is a fuel storage tank that will be located on the eastern, east of the building. And of course, one of the stipulations for that would be the Minnehaha County Emergency Management Department shall be notified if there's any storage of a regulated substance. And that all stationary containers or tanks used for storage of petroleum products located within the county must be registered within the Minnehaha County Emergency Management Department, unless registered pursuant to the federal underground storage state program. Capacity is less than three hundred and fifty gallons, and its highest and/or capacity is less than the eleven hundred gallons, where the tank is located on the land zone for agriculture and when the purpose of storage is intended to be the non-commercial use of product by the owner of the tank, which it would, it would need to be registered since, if it's not on the land zone for agriculture, since this is commercially zoned property. And that's, that's all I have to mention. Do you have any questions?
I have one. Please. You'd said on the screening, you eliminated the trees, you just said fence. Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, I was referring to eliminating the trees as far as discovering that the, the trees were actually, they're located pretty close to the property boundary, but as you can see from the photos that were submitted, you'll see the barbed wire fence there, you can faintly see it.
West property line, yeah. I'm familiar with that drive-by, the old time. That's why I was wondering if you were just requiring screening, then back, a fence to come back from there?
So they'd have to be on the western side of the boundary.
West side, you have the west side of the trees.
Preferably, it would have, preferably have to be located on the west side of that berm there, which is about five feet in height. Comes up to about half of what the, that screen fence is on South Dakota Highway forty-two.
That's true. David, is the berm itself on the east side or off the property, and then the trees are planted on the berm?
The berm, it kind of sits right along that, that property boundary between...
Kind of on the fence line?
Right.
Thanks.
Go back here. You can kind of see it right here, where the trees kind of sit back to the east of the berm.
So the fence runs kind of down the top of the berm, roughly?
Any other questions for Stan?
I just want to clarify, so number three has the live trees to be crossed off, and you have added conditions nine, ten, and eleven, relating, related to maintenance, cleaning trucks prior to arrival, and the fuel storage tank notifying Emergency Management, correct?
Correct.
I have those correct. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Stan? Is the petitioner here?
Yep.
Come forward, state your name, and maybe you've got some comments.
Todd Snyder's, I'm the owner of RNS Sanitation.
Any comments you want to make or questions that you have about Stan before?
Well, the only thing about the fence is it's been a commercial property for a number of years, and other businesses, such as an asphalt milling company, has been there before. Can't imagine that being any worse than me, that's for sure. Before that, I know it was manufacturing, so I'm sure there's a lot of things that not good, too. And currently, there are some old machinery sitting even further down to the north that hasn't required fencing before. I guess, it just doesn't seem like it's totally necessary, but I'm not totally against it, you know, I guess. As far as that, no, I mean, the trucks are empty when they come in, dumpsters, roll-offs are empty. If they're not, if we occasionally have to temporarily set one there, they're able to tarp, so there shouldn't be any debris blowing around. As far as odor, you have to be right up next to them to notice anything.
Commissioners, have any questions for Mr. Snyder? Yes?
So we have parking for someone working at the office. Do your employees not drive their personal vehicles there? They...
Yeah, they do.
So where do they park that?
They park out front also.
Okay.
In the cemented area.
I guess, I thought I heard you say, David, that there was like one parking spot for the office or something, but...
One parking spot per three hundred square feet.
Okay.
There's about, I think it's twelve, fifteen.
You know, I think that this is probably a better location than where you used to operate, which is on this diagram as well. But we went through a kind of heck to get you to operate there, and then you moved to this location and started operations before you had, you know, any, any permit. What, why should we think that you'll, you know, follow the rules that we might set down on it now? You know, with tarping it and, you know, those kinds of other restrictions? Are you going to turn over and leave?
Well, actually, the only reason I did that was because I hadn't actually planned on it, but then we hit December and the winter got really bad, and I really wanted to get trucks inside, so I changed my mind, because I think David will say that I sent two different checks, actually. I sent one initially, and then another one came later, because I decided I needed to get into that building with trucks sitting outside, it was pretty miserable, so. And when you got a big shed sitting there that you can get them in out of the snow and the cold, it just seemed like it was necessary.
Any other questions for the ant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak to the site?
Good evening. Trent Swanson, one hundred North Phillips, Sweet Nine oh One. Here in Sioux Falls, represent Kay and Bonnie Bonson. They live in the附 adjacent to the east of the property. Been there, I think, since the eighties. I mean, Bonnie Bonson indicated to me, so they've known Mr. Luke, who's the property owner, for years and want to be good neighbors, but at the same time want to minimize the extent possible of the impact on their surrounding property use. Obviously, they're an acreage, they've got a home there, and it's residential property right to the east, where you see the trees there. And I know David mentioned our rural service area, future land use designation in the county, and you know, one of the things it says right there, one of the top policies, is to promote the optimal land use relationships and minimize land use conflict. So had various conversations with David, I believe. You probably saw a copy of the letters that we had, we had sent out, raising some of the questions and concerns we had. A lot of those questions were answered, I appreciate that. I had a few things pointed out, some of them are covered tonight, so I guess the only questions we have is how many... Mr. Park, you mentioned the vehicle parking, the employee parking outside. I guess if all is maintained west of the building, that would obviously be a, something that my clients would be happy with, so if there's no, no vehicles being, being parked on the east side of the building. I believe in the applicant's letter and the staff report, it noted that all of the sanitation trucks will be maintained inside the, inside the building, too. So if that's the case, you know, I don't know if that's a stipulation we could actually include in the...
It is included.
Okay, it is included, all right. So that's one of their concerns, that they, right now, they have eight to ten trucks or whatever. As you get bigger, and hopefully your business succeeds and you grow, but if you end up having more, more trucks out there, that would be an impact on the property. The proper screening, you know, the, the fence that you see there on the edge of the property, I think my clients, they would be happy if we could get a eight to ten I think my clients there would be happy if we could get an eight to 10 foot. The property inclines as you go, go to the north, so if there is proper screening there so you can see the roll-off dumpsters, because obviously there are several of them there already and those aren't visible, especially this time of year with the foliage being off the trees. And one of their concerns, a lot of those trees are ash trees and in the next five years, we don't know if the ash borer will have an impact on the trees, so I think that having that fence there installed and maintaining that fence in good condition would be important for my clients. And I guess the, you touched on this a little bit, on the odor and tarping the trucks. Another concern would be whether being littered, that would migrate off the property. Vermin, you know, insects. I guess that's one of the things David and I talked about. How do you ensure that doesn't happen? Obviously, in January, you're not going to see much with odor, but you know, come August, isn't it going to be different when you have a southwest wind? So I don't know how you, that's an easy concept to think, but how you actually regulate it would be a concern. So I guess if we can have all the sanitation trucks washed out, or at least any of the dumpsters that are being stored outside be cleaned out so that they no longer have garbage and refuse and sludge in them, I think that would be important. We also talked about the, where the regulated substances would be allowed to be released from the property. It sounds like the septic system is just going to be gray water. I don't think they're going to need oil-water separates, but those would be the, just general things. And the last thing my clients had a concern with was the traffic in front of the property. And it's no fault of the sanitation trucks, but it is, I think, like was noted before, it is a driver behavior problem where people come to that four-way stop at a wall, a corner, and then the trucks are taken off and they try to pass them on the left or on the shoulder to get around them. They can create a hazard, so hopefully that is something the state could look at, seeing how to address that properly. And maybe it's just a matter of maintenance, because I'm sure the maintenance of having police force, sheriff's deputies out there, I don't know, but those would probably be the, are concerns. And like I said, some of those concerns were addressed tonight and the staff before already. So if there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Commissioners, yes?
I'm going to ask Scott first. Scott, on this diagram here, this is the square property where they used to work, right?
Yeah.
So their driveway previously, Mr. Swanson, the driveway to this business previously was on the east side of your client's property. Were there any issues with that operation?
They didn't note it there. I just know for the Bonsons, where their driveway sits, it's east of the driveway here, so if the trucks are headed east towards Sioux Falls and they go up a lot of their driveway, you could have someone come around and try to pass them.
Okay.
I think that's, it's the eastbound traffic that is the concern there.
Any other questions, Mr. Swanson?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the applicant, did you have any further comments?
No.
Okay.
Can I ask Todd another question?
Certainly.
Todd, do you think you'll have any problem getting along with your neighbors?
Well, anticipate so. I don't mean to be a pastor or anything like that.
Thanks.
I hope not.
Mr. Chairman, I think the neighbors done a good job of adding some additional conditions which shouldn't meet any requirements. This is a far better place than where they were before. It's actually a good building for this use. And where that is, there's actually no passing up past their driveway. However, if you're within 15 minutes of a normal get-to-work time in Sioux Falls, it is irrelevant. They just tear through there like great, that's just the way it is. And since I live two miles west of this location, but I'd move for approval if the conditions are stated.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? All those appear to the eye?
Eye.
Motion to approve passive stipulation. We move to item nine, which is conditional use permit for all bulk fuel storage. Scott?
Yep.
David, you have a break?
Yeah, David gets a break.
Do you take notes?
Smoke them what you gather.
Get the PowerPoint to the right spot here. Good evening, Scott Anderson, Planning Director, and I'm going to be discussing item number nine, which is conditional use permit 14-4. This is to allow bulk fuel storage on property described as Lot 1 block to a Brower's addition. If you're not familiar with where the Brower's addition is, it's at the intersection of 467, I think, at the Hartford exit, and it's on the south side of the exit. What the applicant is requesting is a conditional use permit to operate a bulk storage facility. And I have included the site plan, which is in your packet, which is, I apologize, it's sort of small, but that's what we received. And I looked over what they're requesting. As you can see from the site plan, they're requesting five tanks. And I conducted a site inspection on January 13th, and I noticed that all five tanks are already there and it is under partial construction or there is some containment look like netting around there, and I'll show you pictures of it. But if you read the fine print on the applicant, on the site plan, Tank 1 is a 12,000 gallon tank and will contain dyed diesel number two. And Tank 2 is a, or dyed diesel, Tank 2 is a 6,000 gallon tank and will contain dyed diesel number one. Tank 3 is a 6,000 gallon tank and will contain gasoline. Tank 4 is a 12,000 gallon tank and will contain diesel number two. And Tank 5 is a 12,000 gallon tank and will contain clear diesel. The plan that is before you also shows an 18 by 75 foot loading dock, which is located on the west side of the tanks, and that had not been constructed when I was out there. The site plan does not show any kind of security fencing to be installed on the site. The site plan was submitted with the application, doesn't show any kind of screening, landscaping, security fencing, or lighting, and no driveway or parking areas are showing on the site plan. The applicant did provide a letter from the state fire marshal indicating that they had reviewed and approved the plans and provided them to the Hartford Fire and Rescue and DENR for their files. The Minnehaha County Emergency Management Office reviewed the conditional use permit and did not have any proposed comment or comments on the proposed use. And if approved, staff would typically require the applicant to register the types and amounts of materials stored on the site with the county emergency management office. Now we're going to talk a little bit about Brower's addition. As you know, this is an area that consists of many industrial and commercial businesses. The site to the east of this subject property is the location of a portable toilet and sanitation business. And the property to the west is the location of a commercial business that works with highway recircusing, and they have straw bales that they put over the newly seeded rightways. The area to the south is agricultural land, and the area to the north is the balance of the Brower's addition. You can see there are many businesses that are located there. Staff has received numerous complaints over the past 10 years on the condition of the subdivision roads within the Brower addition. More specifically, Jeffrey Street, which leads into the subdivision typically is very rutted and soft during spring and wet periods during the summer. Jeffrey Street is a gravel road for the first 1,000 feet as it comes off of 463rd, which is a county highway. There have been many maintenance issues in regard to the subdivision road within the development, and the applicant's request will now place additional heavy truck traffic onto the, to this road that already has issues. And I have serious concerns with the current road system not being capable of handling additional truck traffic and the additional truck traffic that, potentially the additional truck traffic will cause damage to the road during the spring and during wet periods. Likely that the truck traffic will also leave more dust in the area. On January 14th, the city of Hartford's planning department and the city administrator reviewed this development request. The city of Hartford's planning commission expressed concern over the existing roadway. They noted that the roads in the Brower addition are gravelled and that spring thaw often leads to frost boils and very soft road conditions. The planning commission wondered how additional heavy truck traffic would damage the roads. Their other concerns that they discussed on January 14th focused on safety issues such as truck, such as traffic safety at the intersection of the county highway and Jeffrey Street and the I-90 interchange. They wondered, they also questioned about spill measures, what kind of spill measures would be implemented for the property. As I indicated, we've received, the county receives perennial calls about the condition of the road from adjacent property owners. And I have received calls from the property owner to the west, and he is very concerned over potential fire danger and the fact that he has many, many straw bales that he uses for highway reconstruction. And he was concerned about his insurance increasing. The area is an industrial complex. I would classify it as an industrial complex, and there are many commercial and industrial businesses that are already located within the Brower addition. As I will show you, there are the five tanks that are already there, and those tanks could have an impact on the use of future development in the area. The proposed site is between the two businesses, so there is already development in the area, and the bulk fuel storage will contain approximately 48,000 gallons of fuel and may impact orderly growth and development in the area. Future businesses may not want to be located next to this use. The other thing that we should be considering when we consider the criteria for approving conditional use permits are the utility roadways, the drainage, and other necessary facilities. There is already water and electricity provided to the site, and the applicant has not indicated that what they would do for wastewater. In 2008, there was a wastewater permit that was approved, which was, which contained five 2,000 gallon holding tanks. Those were installed and inspected, and that septic design was approved by DENR on March 31st, 2008. The most significant issue, however, has already been identified, and that's really the road network and the road infrastructure. The roads, the roads within the Brower second addition, which basically start at the applicant's, basically the, this area right in here is the start of the Brower second addition. So the balance of Jeffrey Street and that, the road that goes around and makes a box, that is already paved. So that was part of the requirements of plating when they platted the second, Brower second addition, was that those roads are paved. But we still have the problem with the heavy truck traffic leading off of 463rd, the county highway, into the property. Article 15 talks about parking requirements, and that is one of the criteria that we are to evaluate. The subject property is on a paved road, a paved section of Jeffrey Street, so all driveways into the site and any employee parking would have to be hard-surfaced and meet the requirements of Article 1504 of the zoning ordinance. And the last criteria that we are to consider are for the, for a conditional use permit is the measures, that measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting. Typically, the applicant would be required to install any lighting that would be pointed downward in an attempt to direct, to control light pollution. Should the conditional use permit be approved, the conditional, this condition should be added. It is likely that a bulk fuel storage facility would have fumes associated with its use, with the loading and unloading of diesel or gasoline. These fumes may be able to be smelled by adjacent property owners, and additional heavy truck traffic would definitely cause additional dust on Jeffrey Street. The South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources does require containment burns to be constructed around all fuel storage tanks within the state. Staff finds that the proposed use is not appropriate to this location. The use will increase heavy truck, heavy truck traffic on an already substandard road and which will likely cause further deterioration and dust. There is also a potential for fumes to impact the neighboring properties. The proposed use may impact the use of the surrounding properties due to fire potential. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of conditional use permit 14-4. And I will show you the pictures of the tanks that were already out there. And this is looking back down the highway or back down Jeffrey Street towards the county highway, and for your benefit, I did take some pictures. This is basically at the intersection of 463rd and Jeffrey, looking back towards, down at the end of the road would be the location of the bulk fuel storage area. And I took the pictures on the 13th. We had a little bit of a thaw that day, so you can see that there is, you know, a ponding and the primary problem, one of the other problems with this development, and it's not the applicant's problem, is that there's poor drainage under these roads. The culverts are undersized, and so when there is a major rain event, water ponds up against the road, the road base and softens it up. And that is not the applicant's problem. It's a, it's an original development flaw when this was created prior to subdivision improve, prior to subdivision regulations being implemented. This is basically looking at the end of Jeffrey Street where it turns and goes to the other road to the, to Kelsey. You can see Kelsey right off to the right where it says 113, basically turns off to Kelsey, and you're looking at the county highway. And this is particularly where, this is where it's particularly bad in the spring. And once again, this is the, this is the, I'm at the subject property looking down. You can see where it's paved and then you can see where the pavement ends. And here are the bulk storage tanks that are there. This is the property that, to the east, which is the Porta Potty sanitation business, and that's all I have.
Scott, on the, showing the tanks, is that corrugated iron stuff? Is that...
I think it's temporary.
Okay.
I don't think that's, I don't think that meets the standards for burning.
That's not the containment vessel, okay.
So Scott, just a quick question, and I know this goes back to when we approved that second addition on Brower's, and we wanted to require him to pave that street.
But we could not.
Because that was part of the regulations? It was like going backwards or something?
Yeah, it was already an existing road, and we could not require him to pave that.
And we wanted to use that as leverage.
Yep.
To make him pave that.
And I have attempted, over the years, to get all those parties together, and I think I've reported back to you on different attempts that I've made. There, you know, there's a defunct road district that's out there. There's a lot of unwillingness to cooperate among the property owners. It's a regrettable situation.
Mr. Chairman?
Scott, do you know, or has the city of Hartford indicated any willingness to cross south of the interstate and essentially annex this development into the city at some point in time?
Well, I know that I've met with the Hartford Economic Development people, and they certainly have an interest in it. I, you know, the issue that they're going to have, the fear that they have is being able to provide water and sewer.
Sure.
Because it has to go under the interstate, and that's a major cost to them.
And does the city of Hartford, or do any municipalities in the state of South Dakota or in Minnehaha County, do they have extra territorial zoning input?
We have a gentleman's agreement with Hartford. That's why we, that's why I routed the request to them, and they discussed it with their planning commission. We do have a formal plating jurisdiction with Hartford, and we, if you look on the map, we have a platted jurisdiction with Brandon, and we have a joint zoning jurisdiction with Dell Rapids, and we have a joint zoning jurisdiction with the city of Sioux Falls, plating and zoning.
So does the city of Hartford currently have any legal authority over what occurs or what is approved inside of Brower's addition?
Not legal authority.
Okay.
Just a gentleman, just that we work together to keep them informed.
Cooperation.
Yeah, we cooperate with them.
Thank you.
Other questions for Scott?
The tanks that are there now, they're not fueled in them, they're just empty.
I think they're empty. I think they're empty, but the petitioners are here, you can ask them. I believe they're empty.
Thanks, Scott. Is the applicant here? Please come forward. State your name and address.
Stationing in a minute.
Monty Schrader, I'm the manager of Hartford Farmers Elevator. And yes, that, what you see there was a misunderstanding between me, the general contractor, and their subcontractors. It was supposed to be four posts in the ground and it turned into be that. So I'll take responsibility for that, that they were supposed to dig the four holes in the corners so they could work at a later date. But subcontractors from the general contractor started direction until I went out there. So, not knowing he went that hard, but, and those tanks are empty, so. And I do understand the concerns of the roads of Brower addition. We're on those roads. We are out there. We haul fertilizer to the east of it. We haul fertilizer into the Brower addition. And it just needs to be something done with the roads. I am willing to do my part if other landowners would be willing to do their part.
Monty, are, are these new tanks or those?
These are brand new tanks, yes.
These aren't Tammons?
No, these are brand new tanks.
From the first site, okay. And is his bulk site now down or gone?
Uh, I believe. It's behind, it's behind VP. They are using his tanks.
They are?
Yes.
Okay. And is he still sell bulk fuel?
No, as of January first, we, we acquired his business.
Okay. So this is the, the replacement for that?
Yes.
That business? And how long ago did you acquire the, the lot in Brower's addition?
Uh, we got a purchase agreement with Mr. Brower, I believe in October.
Okay, of twenty thirteen?
As far as insurance value for other people's property, I talked to our insurance company. I called two other insurance companies. And they said, what your neighbors are doing on their property has no effect on your insurance.
Mr. Chairman, could you talk a little bit about the, the temporary nature of the containment that you have there or is that?
Uh, it is containment. It is not complete. There still needs to be the rubber liner installed inside of there. That is just the outside portion of it. There is the environmental liner that goes in there, which meets all of South Dakota's laws for fuel containment. Sue Equipment is the one who is our general contractor. And this will be the exact same containment that is behind the BP and Hartford for their bulk fuel. It's identical.
Wow, so putting those tanks there, they've got to be lifted because the liners got to go underneath.
I had to put them somewhere and I didn't want them, I wanted somewhere with the wind blowing. I didn't want them rolling around. So I just had the company that built them set them in there for me. I will have to pay to move them out and get the liner back in there. And I did, with the wind we've had, I had to put them somewhere where they wouldn't move.
But when it's done, it's just got a new liner and we're still going to look at metal corrugated in those posts? That's all there is to it?
On the front side, there will be a fence. Our insurance company will require a fence on the frontage property.
But there's no like berm or concrete reinforcement to the corrugated metal?
Corrugated metal.
Yes, sir. And Monty, on your, the elevator site in town, inside the city limits proper, do you have any room on, on the existing site? I understand you're putting up some new bins and so forth. What?
We're limited on space there. And that is zone like commercial, just like this is. But being right smack dab in the middle of town, which being a small town, the elevator was always in the middle of town. We didn't think it would be the best. We didn't think we could get a permit from the city to put it right in town.
I've got to say that, I'm just a layman, but when I look at some of the explosions that happen when fuel tanks rupture, it doesn't look to me like that's going to contain what could happen. And does it flow to the south then if it were to rupture? Does that, looks like it drops to the south there.
Yes, it would flow to the south.
Is there any kind of berm at the end of the lot, so to speak?
Um, I had Sue Equipment, they're, they're the professionals on this. And that holds two and a half times all of our tanks. So that containment will hold seventy thousand gallons. Because that containment's big enough where we could put another twelve thousand gallon tank in there and still be within the requirements of the state of South Dakota.
Is, is there depth to it that's not visible from here or is it ground level?
It's about four feet.
Okay.
So it's above hip height, so.
So you do have permission from the D E N R site approval? I don't see that in our packet.
I think that, that they, they provided the information to, that Sue.
Sue Steel.
Yeah, and if you look at the letter.
Sue Equipment.
Sue Equipment. If you look at the letter, I provided it to you, the Department of Public Safety, that was, they provided that letter to D E N R. But let's see, look at the other. Oh, the other, the other letters, the, from the state fire marshal. So I, I don't know if they received D E N R approval yet, but they would have to before they could operate. That's state law.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to this man?
Hello, my name's Mike Fulkin. I own the property where the stop sign is at forty-six oh three Jeffrey Street. That's when you come off the highway. We're kind of the gateway right there. We have the luxury of owning all the way to the intersection of Brower Circle and the block that other way. So probably as far as a property owner with a lot of road issues, we're right in the heart of it. And my reason for being here is basically the roads. We've been a champion of developing that industrial park from day one. Our building is one of the original buildings there. I think Scott would attest that he's received letters from me backing some of the businesses that have come out there to start up. Would never object to any business. Our concern is the road. We are now entering our fourth year in a lawsuit with Brower and with the Road Association. The Road Association was put together basically to get some, how should I say? It was, it was, it was meant to drain Brower's property that sits to the north of us and take care of Jeffrey Street with some concrete dust. There were no bids put out. There was nothing done as far as legitimately, when that Road Association decided to do the initial work, they then turned around and invoiced all of the property owners without a vote. We just received something in the mail one day that said, for us, we owed almost five thousand dollars to have our roads torn up. I have been to countless township meetings trying to get something done with the roads. And yes, I'm one of those regrettable guys that's fighting the Road Association because it is not a Road Association. It was not endorsed by the county when it was put through. I've had meetings with Sue Roush and Dick Kelly in the past trying to do it the right way. I had met with Matt and Brower as far as what they were trying to do. And it just steadily said, let's do it right. We want to make sure that we have county oversight, that the engineering work is done. Because just lay more gravel on top of the road with no base doesn't do us any good. The only benefit that I've seen out of this is my mowing and landscaping has gone way down. Because as the road gets mushy, everybody cuts through. That's regrettable. It's sad. We've always felt that we were the entrance to the park and tried to maintain a good appearance. And it's hard to do. We can't mow our ditches anymore because they were cut down so deep that they're holding ponds. That's a problem. And that's the only reason that I'm here is because of the road. I would ask that this group work with the county, work with the township. Somebody needs to take over as far as enforcement of that area, as far as doing things right. It's just not getting anywhere. And we continue with the same problem. And we got some awesome businesses that moved in out there. And it's nice to see the second addition with the asphalt and everything. Those roads went in fresh. Our roads, there is no base under them. And as Scott so eloquently explained, the conditions of the roads, it's not going away. It's the more traffic we get, the worse it gets. And springtime will be another, another problem. But we would like to have our streets, you know, look just as pristine as the second edition you've had. And I would support that all the way. But it's not going to be done by just laying asphalt over the top of an old road. And that's what our argument is. Again, that's our case and that's the reason I'm here, so.
Thank you. Questions for?
Mr. Chairman, you say that you've been to several township meetings. Are they not working with you? What is?
In the beginning, yes, they did. And they were very productive meetings. And they even came in at one point because the road went, it, it blew out at the intersection of Jeffrey and Brower Circle. They actually came in and they hired a contractor to come in and he dug down, I think it was, you know, probably close to twelve, twelve feet and then build it with rock and then put it back together. The township, at that point, I understood. They said, really, it was money we spent, we didn't have. But they did it. We had approached them a couple of different times then as far as snow removal, trying to work with them, and they worked with us. But as we've gone along, it's gotten muddier. Presently, we brought suit against the Road Association group. But the way that they handled it and the way they did things without any engineering work, nothing done, and expected everybody to pay for it, and within two years, we're back to the same problem. So for them to have claimed they spent twenty-four thousand dollars to fix Jeffrey Street and part of Brower Circle, only did two things. It drained property that Richard Brower owns and that Matt Maris owned at the time. That was basically it. Richard Brower put in some property at the end of Jeffrey Street. And as soon as it was going up, Matt Maris, who became the president of the Road Association, was at our property. I talked to him numerous times and he kept saying, we've got to pave this road, we've got to pave this road. He says, I'm not getting anybody to rent my property. The storage units that he had for motorhomes. And his argument was because the roads are so bad, nobody wants to drive a motorhome down there. I wouldn't either. He pushed and he pushed and he pushed and we started, we actually, first time we went to a township meeting, I'd have to ask Dave back there, but I think we had fourteen of us that went up there and met with township. And it was not to argue or anything, just to ask for assistance. We understand the tax base. We understand the problems associated with it. After that meeting, met with Steve Farmer, who at the time was the chair of the township. And he asked, would you guys just put one representative to bring the issues forward and work with us? And we started down that road. And I was the representative that was chosen and met with them continuously. And then it got to the point where they really felt that there, there wasn't enough tax money for them to go in there and rebuild the roads. I can understand that. When I met with Dick Kelly and Sue, it was how to form a real road district association. And Sue had said that she would come and be the witness for the voting and everything to set it up with the officer. And bam, those guys set up their own road association, had a meeting, and decided to fix the roads. And then we're sitting here today and say it's, yeah, it's cost us probably enough money in legal fees that we could have paved the road. But it sets a precedent that as soon as we start paying that type of maintenance that's non-existent, it becomes a black hole. So here we are, this many years later, saying, we need help, we need support. We shouldn't have to worry about a business like, you know, the Farmer's Elevator coming in or the co-op because we got a crappy road for a driveway. And that, that shouldn't be their problem, nor should it be ours. We're willing to pay the taxes, but we need to help. And it starts with the county and the township helping us a little bit as far as overseeing it, helping us do it the right way. It's gone on way too long. Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Questions? Anyone else in the audience want to speak to the site?
My name is Karen Lee Singer. We own the property at four-sixty-three, which is directly to the west of this property. Our, our concern also is basically the roads that lead to it. We've been there, I think, for approximately twelve or thirteen years. And in the deed, when we first bought the property, it stated that Mr. Brower would maintain the roads and take care of them and keep them in satisfactory condition. And he has never done that. In fact, we did the snow removal and now other people throughout the area are doing the grading of the road with I-beams pulled behind vehicles. And there's people that are, are putting their own gravel or whatever materials they can to fill the holes as you go into the property. So there's nothing consistent being done and nothing really being recorded because everybody's just doing whatever they can just to make them accessible. So basically, it's been whatever, twelve or however many years. So that's our, our main issue as well is that it's just going to deteriorate the road more until something's done about the road.
Bob Shelby, three oh nine South Madison Street, Campbell. Have these guys applied for a building permit?
They're not that, they're not that way yet. They have to get this approved before they can apply for a building permit.
Okay, so all the work that's been done out there is legally done? So first off, I think they should have to be tear down what they've got, put it back to the original condition, and start the process right. Because this is a bunch of, well, if they didn't know they needed a building permit, they're lying to you. Because every place in South Dakota requires a building permit. My concern is the road. I own the storage units at four-sixty-three one-five Jeffrey Street. I have customers complaining in the spring they can't get down there. They don't want to drive down that road because of the condition. They pull poles in and out of there. They take their antique cars in and out of there. They're very concerned about damaging them by getting stuck or beat up going down that road. If the planning and zoning office is concerned about the road, why do they keep issuing building permits out there? Until Brower does something, he's, until he's forced to do something, he's not going to do anything. I'm like Lee Singer. We did not have anything in our deed that we had to provide a road district. Nothing. we had to provide a road district. Nothing. I mean, we were the, we were in favor of doing the work, but it wasn't done legally or correctly either. The road that's there isn't wide enough hardly to turn a semi up, because we had a business across the street from us that had a semi business, and when he tried to pull in there, back in there, he'd have to pull ahead, go onto our driveway, and he bent the culvert, so it sticks up on the end. There's not enough drainage there. You know, work that's been done out there, that shouldn't have been. I don't care where they're at on it. They should have a conditional use permit long before this. And why wasn't it ever posted out there that this work is going to be done? There should have been a sign out there stating they're going to get a conditional use permit, and I haven't seen the sign anywhere. As far as fire protection, what, what protection is out there? Anything that comes out there has to come from the city, from their township or county fire protection. You get 50,000 gallons of fuel on fire, it's going to be one hell of a fire, and it's going to burn more than their property. It's going to spread to adjacent properties and even maybe to the adjacent properties to that. And there's, they have no control over that. They have no fire protection there, foaming or whatever it would take to protect that. And I guess I don't know why these guys got that much work done out there. Another thing that concerns me, if any work gets done on that road, it's got to be designed to handle the traffic that they want to put out there. It doesn't even handle the traffic that's there. All of my traffic comes in and out of there is pickup and cars. So my business doesn't affect the road like some of these others do. How are they going to turn their semis around out there? Do they have a road going around the back of that to turn around? Are they going to try to back out on the road? How are they going to get turned around out there on that narrow road? And in the springtime of the year, I doubt if they're going to be able to turn into that driveway unless they have a very, very wide driveway.
How would you imagine that would save Jeff? It's difficult to see, but-
I don't understand what you're saying.
Jeffrey Street's up, is on the top of the page, so.
May I explain?
Yeah, as soon as he's finished the last thing.
Jeffrey Street is where?
Top of the, top of the picture, I believe.
Okay, then they got to drive in that part of their tank.
The north property line.
So how far did their tanks step back in the road then?
You can see in the picture. I haven't measured it.
It looks, based on the picture, that it's approximately 55, because it's 55 from the back of that square containment area to the back line, so it looks like it's probably about the same to the front property line, 55 feet.
And like, I see that, how are they going to turn around in there? Are they going to back out or get back out of there again?
If you're asking questions, everyone at the end will respond.
The safety feature coming off of that highway, Jeffrey Street, there's a lot of traffic on that road. Anytime I've driven out of there, I've had to wait for this one car to go by. And turning in there, I bet most of the time I have to wait for a car coming from the other way before I can turn in. So whether they're going to get turned in without having an accident, that's a very serious question, very sick, you know, serious consideration. So, but the rest of them, my concern is that Brower never built the roads correctly. The roads hold water in the ditches. They need to be designed so they drain. 150, 200 feet to the south, that drops off into a valley. There shouldn't be a drainage issue on that property, because there is tremendous amount of drainage very close to that on all that property. And that's one of the reasons that we bought that is because of the drainage. We don't have problems with water buildup or anything like that. So the water drains from our property very, very well. But there's other properties there that the culverts aren't designed right. They're bent at the ends. They don't take water in. The roads ditches off old water. I don't know what kind of business they've done out there. There's not much out there for business with a fertilizer or whatever they do out there. I've never seen them out there. I don't know what access they have to other property out there, but whatever business they do is very, very minimal. I mean, that should even be a consideration. So until the roads are fixed properly and they can provide some type of fire protection on that property, I don't think it should ever be allowed. So, and I think whatever they have done has to be tore down, put back to the original condition before anything else ever goes through. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question, I guess. Where is your property relative to their, their place?
It's-
Are you on the south side of Jeffrey or-
On the south side of Jeffrey. I think where those three-
The three ones-
Right there, right there. Those four buildings right there is where we're at.
And Mike, you're right at the entrance?
Yeah, all the way at the intersection where the stop sign is.
Yeah. If you're ever out there in the spring of the year, that ditch in front of Mike's place gets full of water. The ditch on the east side of his property gets full of water. The property on the east side of that road, the Fulham Camps gets full of property, full of water. The ditch on the south side of Fulham Camps gets full of water. The ditch on the south side of Jeffrey Street is full of water. I guess I don't know who designed it or who laid it out, or how the county or the township or whoever allowed Brower to ever start out there with this kind of a conglomerate.
The Leesingers' property's right here.
Yeah. Right.
Thank you.
Okay, the building right east of us is at, Wayne, I think his first name is, Boozman, I think his name is. So there's a building between us and Leesingers besides. So, I hope something gets done to prevent more of this here. Thank you.
Would the applicant mind coming up and addressing the truck traffic placement?
The way Sue Equipment designed and their engineers laid it out, they will go clear to the east side of the property, pull in, come around, and then where the cement will be, that's where they'll load and unload, and then pull back out from the west side of the property, back out on Jeffrey. It'll be a horseshoe type driveway.
I see. Question. Are you, are you going to pave that?
If we have, I mean, we probably won't pave it. We'll concrete, pavement will not handle.
So you probably would, on your own property, assure a good track for those trucks?
Yes. Well, we'll probably, my plan is on the east side of the property, put in a concrete approach or driveway with a gravel base all the way around to the concrete, and then another concrete going back out on the Jeffrey Street. And as far as fire suppression, the BP at Hartford, there's no fire suppression on their bulk tank. And I don't think it's required by state law for-
Are there fire hydrants at all at this-
There is no fire hydrants out there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I guess I gotta comment. The water that's out there is in a very big line that goes out there. That runs that whole Jeffrey Street. I think it might be a four inch line at the moment. Will we ever get fire protection out there, fire hydrants?
Minnehaha Community Water doesn't provide fire protection anywhere in its service area. So there, there are no fire hydrants anywhere in the Minnehaha Community Water system.
Okay. But they're in Hartford?
That's a municipal.
Yeah.
They may, but they probably augment their water.
Yeah. Stones throw away though.
Yeah, they, they, yeah, across the interstate.
Not that they use those to fight fires, but there are places where you can move them where there are hydrants is what I would like to see. Anyone else? No, please.
Not that this has anything to do with, with any, but the question was asked as far as how did it get this way? And you had, up here, Scott, you had a picture, an overview of the buildings in the intersection. Were the off-ramp or the on-ramp of the interstate and then 463rd Avenue, the highway? In the beginning, where our building is, that's on the corner, we had, two acres behind, we had an option to buy, and then where the antique mall is now, that was non-existent. What started the problem as far as drainage and losing the road to begin with, happened when Brower sold the property to the south of our building, where Alan Stockwell built. And if you ever drive by, you see that building, and it sits out on an island. He removed all the dirt from that whole intersection where the antique mall is and off the two acres that we had an option on, and he moved all that over there to build up a platform for Stockwell to build his building when he sold him that lot. We questioned at the time, because we had an option on that two acres, and we were told he was going to put the fill back. It was just a temporary deal. There again, we ended up in a court case over because he didn't put it back. And we had a contract already signed to start building up a building, which is sitting there now where the fire department people are. We put up that building, and my son and I had another business in there. But at that time, that took the drainage that was laid out in the whole place, it took it in reverse, because now Brower's property, that intersection and where our building is, was lower than the drainage. So consequently, all the water that was coming off the interstate and everything that drains from the north was in a holding pond at that whole intersection. And that's what started then the road blowouts, because it just held the water. There was no drainage. So when I mentioned as far as this Road Association, when they came in, they cut down through our ditch, they lowered the drainage over two feet. At Fulham Camps Ditch, they did the same, to take it back to where Matt had property to the east of the antique mall, and Brower had more property to the south of the antique mall. So they cut that drainage. They started low up there, but they cut it all the way down. That's how it started.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Does anyone apply for a conditional use permit tonight?
Did the applicant have another thing you-
I mean, I'm just, I, I mean, I'm willing to work if they want to start a legitimate road association. I'm willing to work with them as far, I mean, I know that affects their business. It's going to affect my business, and I'm willing to work with anybody if they want to get a legitimate road system.
Absolutely. What we're trying to do through the county.
And I don't know, maybe Scott could help us form one or whoever, Dick or Susan, I don't know who they are, but if they could help us, I'd be willing to work with them if we can get it, something happening.
All right. Thank you.
This is over a little bit. We've been at it for 14 years.
Got more here.
I guess my question is, are they applying for a conditional use permit tonight?
Yes.
At either you grant it or you don't grant it.
Or they have a, continue it. They have other options too, but they're taking action on the conditional use permit tonight, 14-04.
Mr. Chairman, I tell you, 12 years ago, Jim Sweep was on the county commission, and he told a story about how there was a residential subdivision where they were going to build 12 houses or whatever, but they were only going to build two to start. And they wanted them to pave the whole drive going into the thing, and they said, "Well, we're only building two right now. Can we do it later?" So later on, there were like nine houses built, and they came to the county commission and they said, "Why the hell are you going to pave our road?" And I see this as, you know, we changed our ordinance as far as rural residential subdivisions, and this is a terrible example of what happens with, without that protection. I talked to our highway department about this. Did they ever get back to you, Scott?
They called. We, they, they're aware of the situation.
Bottom line, according to a highway engineer, needs a 12-inch engineered base of a four-inch asphalt to make this adequate, and that's just the bottom end of it. If, if it was going to be more, it should be like six inches of asphalt. And there's also issues here where they're dragging, I'm sure, mud out onto the county road and, you know, causing hazards that way. There's no way that I can see that we can approve this with the roads in this kind of condition, or any other development, any other construction in this, in this subdivision. I think there is room to get it done if we, if we can find, you know, a way to get a real road district going, maybe with some loans from the economic development people, Ready Fund or something like this. But there's no way I can see supporting, going ahead with it at this point. It's just my view, I guess. But I have been on roads like that, and it is horrible.
Yeah, whatnot. I think as long as it's not redundant, please.
What's that?
As long as your comment is not redundant.
No. Why weren't signs posted on the property that they're having a conditional use permit?
Did you post signs on the property?
Yes, I posted a sign on the trees.
On where?
They were posted on the trees on the east side of the property.
How about they be out by the ruin?
At this time, we'll close, I'll be testimony. Commissioners, further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would agree with Mr. Barf. I think it's just, as much as I, I want to see that development occur, I think there is just too many problems at this point in time to, to approve it, and the site plan we have doesn't include the driveway. There's things that aren't, aren't present that I would like to see that should be addressed, and I can never remember if, if we want to, we can, we could defer it.
You could.
But then how long can we defer it down?
As long as, I mean, within reason, you know, you could defer it six months. You could defer it one month. I, I wouldn't encourage you to go past six months, but-
Because if we deny it, then-
Then they have to wait one year before they can reapply.
Then lose a year before they reapply.
My hope would be that we wouldn't have to kill it to make it live. But I think, I think there is hope. You know, you may have better ideas on Ready Fund kind of money from the state government.
It's kind of like getting money from the county, right?
We don't have any. But there are, there are options from the Department of Transportation, the Governor's Office, and Economic Development. There's a, I, I, there is a funding mechanism for road improvements. A prime example is a lot of the boom in construction of ethanol plants in the mid 2000s necessitated acceleration lanes, deceleration lanes, turning lanes, and things like that. So I know those funds were used to widen, you know, state highways and so forth. This is on a county road, correct, Scott?
Yes.
It's not even a county road.
Well, 463-
It's private.
Well, 463rd is county.
The Wall Lake Oil, I guess, is, is known as a, is a county-
County highway.
County highway, not a state highway. I don't know if there's any money in the fund, Commissioner, but I do know those, those things do exist. One could ask the question. And the economic, Minnehaha County Economic Development, people might also have some ideas.
Makita.
Makita, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So my understanding the deferral process here, I don't know if it's just merely putting off the inevitable, but if you do 90-day deferral to allow the parties to try to come to some conclusion, it sounds like the road issue, if that gets mitigated, some of the other issues can be addressed through conditions put on the development of the, of the bulk fuel site. The alternative is, if it's denied, there's, there's a one-year, one-year delay.
Well, they would have to wait one year before they could reapply for the same conditional use.
I think 90 days may not sync up with their scheduled meetings, so I'll make a motion to- to defer for three months.
Can I second?
Yeah, I'll second that. I guess comments, I, you know, I agree. I mean, it's not their fault that Brower didn't make the roads right in the first place. You know, why are we hurting future businesses, which are good businesses, for something that's been done in the past? You know, we, somehow we've got to try to get that road fixed. And I don't know what the answers are for that.
One idea might be to have some entity bring it up to SNF and then have the road district organize in a way to adequately fund maintenance. If we brought it up to 12-inch engineered base and a five-inch asphalt top and then, you know, people kicked in based on keeping that up.
But that will do nothing if you don't drain the water away.
Well, that would be part of it.
So I agree with you guys on the 90-day, three months deferral, I think that's fine. However, there should not be any city on that site either. That's also a problem.
How do you get it?
So if it isn't, I agree with the 90-day deferral, but it also says date, should nothing happen, that stuff's got to be gone in 90 days. I mean, it's no different than people used to town, we made them tear down their garage, it was all weird. Almost never coming in and begging forgiveness. Doesn't always work, unfortunately.
It'd be April 28th would be the, the meeting in April, so that would be three months, basically. April 28th, it would be the continuation date back to this meeting.
Further discussion? Call and question, now, all those in favor of a three-month deferral, say aye?
Aye.
Close the same sign. Motion carries, I just defer it for three months.
Mr. Chairman?
Election of officers.
Question on that, Scott. What would happen if, say, in 30 days or 60 days, that something gets figured out with the road? I mean, it's not going to happen that fast, but maybe there's something comes about that they can fix that road. Would it be possible it could be moved back on the agenda?
No. No, I like to, the way, the reason I like to leave it at the April 28th is because if we put it back on the agenda, then the other people that were here that testified wouldn't know. I mean, that way...
Because there wouldn't be a notification process.
That's right. Their notification is tonight, they were at the meeting, they heard we're continuing it till April 28th, and then they will know to come in for that meeting then. So I don't like to move it ahead because then you can be, it can look like you're, you know, trying to...
Pushing something through.
Yeah, pushing something through.
Okay. Would you have another agenda? Before that, I'm missing, introducing even to our, to our group. My condolences as well.
Election of officers.
Right. We have the election of officers for this, this year, right, Scott?
Yeah.
So we need a chairman, vice chair. That's it.
Need both.
Do you want?
Mike, you'd be a great chair, wouldn't you?
Well, at some point before I'm off, I'm going to sit in my chair. I'm fine to do it. I like to talk too much to be the chair, so, you know. Too bad everyone's here tonight, otherwise.
Or that's a show. It's so rare.
Mike, if you want to do it, I, I, I guess I can, I'm chairman.
Well, you be chairman, I'll be vice chair.
Or vice president.
Because you're only here about two-thirds of the time.
Yeah, that's probably changing, I guess.
So, did I miss a motion?
No, we're just discussing.
I thought I heard the women say something.
I nominated Wayne for chair, but it died for lack of...
Okay, I thought I heard Bonnie second it, sorry.
I did.
You did, you did, didn't you?
I did.
I thought I heard that.
Do you want the general?
It, it's not really what, I actually enjoy being in the Spur Office, a member. So does Mike. Yeah, yeah. Have your motions, but, you know, I'm, I'm fine to do it, you know.